Good evening. It's 7:00 PM on the 13th, and I want to thank the Prince William County School Board and Dr. Steve Walts and all the other staff of the school system for hosting the Prince William County Board of Supervisors this evening and also this afternoon. That worked really well for us for our work session, so thank you very much. I want to give a quick shout out to the school board member from the Brentsville District whose birthday it is. Yes, that's you, Adele. Adele Jackson, it's her birthday. I promised Dr. Latif we would not sing, so save everybody from my singing. And I know we have some things on the agenda this evening, review of the $25 million in CARES Act funding, update on the joint effort to provide the $2 million in CARES Act funding for childcare grants, discussion of budgetary needs, and as well as a schedule of future joint meetings. But I also know that, Dr. Latif, you have citizens' time coming, and so I'm going to turn the meeting over to you.
Wonderful. Madam Chair, thank you so much, and I'd like to call this joint meeting to session with the Board of County Supervisors. As a matter of our rules, because we are meeting under slightly different rules in the Board of County Supervisors, as we participate electronically, some of our members, I have to read a statement about the kind of meeting we do each time we have a meeting, so bear with me. The purpose of this joint meeting between the Prince William County School Board and the Board of County Supervisors is to provide both boards with the opportunity to discuss the funding needs of the school division as a result of the pandemic and, in particular, funding necessary to the reopening of Prince William County schools. Due to the pandemic, some members of the Prince William County School Board are participating in this meeting through electronic means under Virginia Code 223708.2 and the authority granted by the General Assembly on April 22, 2020, through Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permits the school board to meet electronically during the pendency of the current state of emergency for the purpose of transacting such business as is statutory required or necessary to continue operations of the Prince William County Public Schools and discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. Accordingly, citizen comment period this evening is limited to 30 minutes. Citizens who signed up in advance shall have two minutes each and may speak only to this evening's agenda items. The rules for the school board's regular citizen comment period were suspended during the pendency of the state of emergency by actions of the school board in April this year, and will be reinstated as soon as feasible. One other note I'd like to remind everyone is that we have four board members here in attendance. Physically, the school board needs to have five to discuss anything that isn't part of the operations management during the emergency. So tonight, we're going to, the agenda is restricted to what we have on the agenda, and everything that's on there is related to the opening and operations of the school as we continue proceed through the emergency. We have two citizens signed up for comment time. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium. If you do not do so, you will be asked to step aside. Please give your name, address for the record when you approach the podium. Our speakers this evening first will be Sandra Kern.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Kern. I am from the Potomac District in both for schools as well as my supervisor. Good evening Chairman Wheeler, Honorable Chairman Latif, honorable supervisors, and board members. I am humbled and honored as a citizen of this county and a family of five generations to come before both bodies, brilliant leaders and thoughtful minds. First, I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for your unanimous and most generous needed public funds for our public school crisis. In the spirit of what your distribution was intended, was to provide an equitable education for our most valuable assets, our children. FAP, a free and appropriate public education, is essential. You campaign "Strong Schools." You must fulfill that promise. Children and families of Prince William County would appreciate your support to become productive citizens. Accountability in children is a positive investment for our futures, our county's future. Secondly, I would like to thank the school board for their most difficult decisions to find a plan that produces an equity in education for all students. With great concern, I do feel many of our most vulnerable students are falling behind. I ask and plead that your efforts to work with every community resource, students, teachers, parents, bus drivers, cafeteria staff, janitorial specialists, everyone, to be transparent. An educational plan that gives opportunities for all grade levels in-person learning is a promise to keep as well. Our passionate educators are phenomenal. The endless hours of training for virtual presentation was an enormous task. Sadly, some of our students are suffering. They need to be in classrooms with teachers and peers. We can do better together. I ask for a season of humanity for each other and place our differences aside and protect the light of hope for our students and their future. We must be Prince William County's strong in government and in schools. I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kern. Erica Hudson.
Hi, my name is Erica Trudenek. I'm from the Brentsville District. My biggest regret from last week is not speaking at the school board meeting, but I can't give up. I know you're discussing the budget this evening, and my hope is that you discuss ways that you can use the budget to reopen schools to at least the 50-50 model that we saw in the surveys that many of us voted for. I'm a mom, a Prince William County native, daughter of a retired Prince William County principal, and of a retired Prince William County police officer, wife of a combat wounded veteran who owns a small business, former PTO president, a parent volunteer in the school system for many years. My love for teachers, students, and respect for the time and work civil servants put in should not be questioned. But most of all, I'm a mom to three boys at three different schools, elementary, middle, and high school, who at various times this school year have cried, raged, and thrown fits and simply fell apart each in their own way. They each have a very unique learning style and range from an IEP gifted and just plain average. Virtual learning is not for my family. I've had to attend with two of my children daily to assist with online learning because they are failing completely or missing assignments. High schoolers and middle schoolers never showing their faces to teachers or friends, little interaction occurring even when called upon. Younger kids just begging to be heard to tell you anything about their day because they yearn for a personal connection. Each one of my children has assistance with technology, has needed assistance with technology submitting assignments and working around technical difficulties. Our business is undergoing challenges due to COVID, but having to practically homeschool our children has made it running a business even harder. I'm in tears weekly over this. I want my children to learn in person, as so many around the country are successfully doing. They're playing rec sports with no issues. Why not school sports? I want their mental health to not be a worry or concern daily. Other states and counties have returned to school full-time and been very successful. Why not us? Virtual learning is doing a disservice to the students, parents, and teachers alike. I will continue to advocate for kids, parents, for teachers, and for Prince William County to continue to offer a world-class education, which is not possible virtually. Please teach my kids in person.
Thank you. That will conclude citizen comment time. Mr. Stevens, we don't have any online, correct?
Correct.
Correct, Ms.?
In-person only.
Okay, in-person only. All right, next, we're moving on to Agenda Item 1.03, the approval, the resolution of the CARES Act funding. This is an action item that the school board will take action on right now. At the end of the meeting, as we adjourn, or at some point, Chair Wheeler and I will figure it out, they will, the Board of County Supervisors will then give budgetary authority to us. So first, we will ask for that. So this item is for action. Ms. Williams, do you have the motion for me?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board adopt the attached resolution requesting approval of additional $15,906,398 in CARES Act funding. The resolution reads that the Prince William County School Board requests that the Prince William County Board of Supervisors accept budget and appropriate $15,906,398 in CARES Act funding awarded by VDOE to Prince William County Public Schools. The funding will support COVID-19 preparedness and response measures for the 2020-2021 school year to include instructional support, testing supplies, personal protective equipment, sanitation, and technology for distance learning. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Do I have a second on the motion? Ms. Zargarpur seconds. We'll do a roll call vote because we're, well, let me open the floor for discussion. Any discussion on this matter? Anybody at home, just raise your hand if you have anything to say? Okay, great. So seeing no discussion, we'll call for the vote. We'll do a roll call vote because we're not on the computer tonight. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes. Ms. Jesse, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jesse votes yes. Ms. Wall, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Wall votes yes. Ms. Williams, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Williams votes yes. Ms. Zargarpur, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Zargarpur votes yes. And Dr. Latif, I vote yes. Absent is Wilk Ann Ralston.
Correct. So seven yes, motion passed.
Six yes.
I'm sorry.
Six yes, two absent, and motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay. I think at this point, do you want to do your part, or we're doing it at the end?
We actually have to adjourn the joint session before we do our parts.
Good, so then we'll wait till the end.
We have to do the variant.
Excellent. So then we'll move on to 1.04, which is the update on expenditures for the earlier CARES Act funding of $25 million. This is up for discussion, well, this information. Dr. Walts or Mr. Wallingford, or would, how are we doing this? Am I doing this? Remind me. I think I'm doing this, right?
Yes, Chairman Latif, yes.
Okay. Can we put the slides up? Thank you, Ms. Williams. Okay, so tonight is October 13th. This is, what we'd like to do is provide you all, first of all, thank you from the bottom of our hearts, as you heard from our citizens earlier and from our administration, teachers, and staff for the support you have all shown in a number of ways this year. Number one, when we had to rework our budgets, you guys really came through and held the line for schools as much as you could, and we truly appreciate that. Number two, for the $5 million that this county gave us this summer, very grateful, allowed us by computers, and then the $20 million that you allocated just a few weeks ago has been extraordinarily helpful. As we go through this pandemic and struggle through this awful 2020 year, I can tell you that the unanimous nature of the votes of the County Board of Supervisors and the school board on budgetary items as we are addressing the pandemic has shown, I think, our public, when we work together, we can get a lot done. And I think, I can tell you from the school community, we're all very grateful to all the supervisors for all their hard work this year. Next slide, please. We're going to quickly go through, I don't have that many slides. The state revenue update. Currently, we have, we are being advised of a $5.5 million sales tax shortfall coming up. We also are down, I think it's 2,500 students or 3,000. What, Mr. Wallingford, do you have the number?
Yes, Dr. Latif, it's just a little bit over 3,000 students short from what our budget was built on.
So being 3,000 short, we're about $15.9 million short in enrollment this year. Now of note, there is a potential that the governor and the General Assembly will hold harmless for each of these shortfall amounts, which means they will not penalize us those dollars you see up there and hopefully find ways to fund us there. And so I think there's hope, and I think good reason to hope, that they will hold us harmless. Number two, the shortfalls may not be fully addressed until January session of the General Assembly. Three, one of the concerns that I didn't put up on the slide is that, you know, those enrollment numbers, we hope, are temporary due to the pandemic, but if those enrollment numbers hold permanent, we would be looking at a $15.9 million shortfall each year coming up, if those numbers truly hold. Hopefully, they don't. Next slide. CARES Act sources. So originally, there was money that came directly from the CARES Act through the state earmarked for schools. That's called the ESER money. We got $9.3 million. It was in the late spring. The ESER set aside, another .9 million. The CRF county funding that you provided this summer, $5 million CRF county funding of $20 million you are aware of. And then the CRF state funding that will be voting on tonight is $15.9 million. And then we put in another request last week for $3.2. If after you expend your needs and all your COVID-19-related expenses, if there is any leftovers, we have some needs there. Next slide. And the school board passed a resolution on that last week. Regarding the ESER funds, of the $9 million we received in the spring, continuation of pay for our employees was $5 million. Digital equity, we spent $4 million just on computers at that time and software upgrades and the ability to do the spring quarter, last quarter of the year, and equitable services for local private schools, $234,000. ESER set aside of $897,000. We use those monies for special education services and supports, universal screening, vision, cleaning supplies, and facility upgrades with the amounts there listed. Next slide. So number three is the CRF $5 million. Well aware of this summer, we took that and bought basically 11,600 computers for our students. The CRF $20 million is broken down as above. Digital equity, more, 36,000 more computers, that's $15 million. 100 gigabyte school network upgrade, which you guys are really helping a lot with, and that'll be $1 million there. Wi-Fi school parking lots, $60,000. Zoom for teachers, closed captioning for students. Special education dollars, ELL dollars, student learning, and there's about $88,000 we are, have left of that $20 million. Next slide. Those are, that's a slide you may be familiar with. It's a similar slide that we showed you in the summer for our reopening needs, and then when I came back over for the $20 million meeting, those are the needs. The total needs are $47 million, broken down as above by IT, PPE, HR, student learning, special ed, English learners facilities. The CARES allocations monies you see on the next two columns, and the remaining needs of about $22 million as we take down what our original needs were based on the monies received so far. Next line. And that's it. And so that's where we are as an update. We, you know, you had all asked me to make sure that we're open and transparent about the spending, what we were going to use for the money, with the money. The Audit Committee for the School Division has asked to have an Audit Committee meeting next week to make sure that we, you know, just do the full audit on that. All federal dollars require audits, and so we'll be looking at that to make sure the processes of the spending and the controls around the spending were done appropriately. And moving forward with the $15.9 million, we're going to, as we pointed out in our resolution, we listed the things we would be using those dollars for and to try to reopen schools. At this point, we can take questions. Mr. Canlin.
Yeah, thank you very much, Ms. Chairman, and I appreciate that summary. There was just one item I didn't quite understand, and maybe you could just provide a little bit more background. It said continuation of pay, about $5 million. Is that $5 million money that was already budgeted for in your regular budget, and then you're covering that cost with the CARES Act money, or is that a new $5 million in pay to employees?
Mr. Wallingford, can you answer that question for me? I can't hear him. Dr. Walts, do you have an idea on that $5 million? I think I do, but I don't want to say it wrong. I'd rather you guys. Mr. Wallingford?
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Latif, members of the board, Mrs. Wheeler, and members of the other board, that continuation pay is fiscal '20 cost in excess of what we had budgeted for salaries for people associated to COVID. It is not fiscal '21 cost, those are fiscal '20 costs.
Mr. Wallingford, would you give an example of an employee we would be using that for as I look at Mr. Canlin shaking his head?
So, any of our classified employees, our frontline workers who were delivering food or cleaning schools or dealing with issues associated to the pandemic, were actually being paid an additional, like overtime, they were being paid time and a half.
Right.
And we refer to that as continuation pay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent. No, I just want to make sure you were clear, Mr. Canlin. I can't see that far, actually, to see if, you know, I gotta have, my glasses get fogged up with these things, these, you know. They all make fun of me when I wear my anti-fog mask, so I have to wear one of these. Any other questions, please?
Dr. Latif.
Supervisor Lawson, sorry.
Thank you. First of all, I need advice on the anti-fog mask, so let's talk later. So I can't help but wonder if I didn't get the handout, or are you all looking at what was up there on the screen and print in front of you? Because I don't think I got anything.
We did not provide a handout, but we can get that to you.
Okay.
Yeah, but if you'd like me to put the slide back up, is there a particular slide you had a question on?
No, but, yeah, I'm more of a paper person in front of me.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Any else, Ms.? Okay, so that was the presentation on the monies. No further questions? Anybody have a question at home? Yeah, Ms. Lawson.
I'm sorry.
And so, you know what, what I would actually advise everyone, just because of the rules we have at this meeting, I think any questions you may have regarding the reopening, we would do under this item of the agenda, because there's no other items where we could talk about it.
Oh, okay.
So I think this would be the time, if you have questions about it as it relates to budget and what we're spending, I think this would be the right time to do it. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for opening that door. Actually, before we talk about reopen, can you go put, can you put that slide back up with the funding?
Sure.
The line items?
Yeah, can we go back up to what we spent the money on as we had the total reopening needs slide? The one at the end with the four columns, slide four or five?
Sorry, one second, I have the wrong presentation.
Okay.
So I don't need to see the specific item, but
Yeah, go ahead.
I definitely am interested in talking about reopening, but before we go there, one of the things that our board has done, and I'm going to look to Supervisor Canlin, would you say in the last five, five years, we've really invested a lot of money in bringing our IT infrastructure up to date? And it's my understanding that the school division, for lack of a better way of saying it, needs to do the same. And probably because, and I'm not blaming anybody in particular, but I'm guessing that that was something maybe you were considering or the previous board was considering before the pandemic hit. Totally understand why you needed to purchase a bunch of laptops, but can you talk to us a little bit about a plan in place to improve your technology, acknowledging that we're working on the same?
Sure, and I think you guys have helped us a little bit with this 100G part of it, but I think I'll turn that over to Dr. Walts. Can you address her question?
Yes, thank you. More specifically, I'll have Mr. Gilfoyle, the Associate Superintendent for Communications and Technology. And Mr. Gilfoyle, you might even mention the fact of our trip out to Iron Mountain where we got a briefing on the county's willingness to partner with us on the use of the storage at that facility, and then a little bit more to Supervisor Lawson's question, please.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for the question. So actually, back in January, before the pandemic really was even on our radar yet, I presented to the school board a four-year digital equity plan that was based on the idea of moving our whole school division forward in support of all of our students and our teachers. Some key components to that plan that was presented included implementation of a Canvas learning management system, a move to digital equity, the one-to-one device for every student in the school division, upgrading our networks, our infrastructure, moving to a cloud-first strategy to the degree that we were able to do that, and upgrading our overall bandwidth. It was a four-year plan, and the school board approved that just around, right around the time of the pandemic hit. We have used that plan as our guide for implementing the funding that you all have graciously provided to us, as well as the funding of the school board. And essentially, what we have done is taken that four-year plan and implemented it in about four months. So what we thought was going to take four years, we have almost nearly fully achieved. And essentially, we will, by the end of the calendar year into January, we will have a laptop for every student. We will have the bandwidth in place for start of second quarter, and we are continuing, and we have implemented the Canvas learning management system, and we have moved to a cloud-first strategy. And we have been working closely with the county IT department on many of these, especially when, on the bandwidth part, and as Dr. Walts mentioned, the co-location, taking advantage of the county's agreement with Iron Mountain to move the servers that we still do have, or we have moved many things to the cloud, but those that still run on our servers, including the internet access, we will be co-locating with the county. So those are just a few of the things that we've been working on.
Thank you.
So my apologies, Ms. Lawson. We will have on the other agenda, 1.06 is further pandemic-related budgetary needs for the reopening, so there's another spot to ask questions about the reopening. So my apologies on that, I didn't see that reopening line there. Other questions?
Chairman Latif.
Ms. Vega.
Thank you. So I heard that we're short about 3,000 students in terms of enrollment. The projected number was 92,000, so currently we're talking about 89,000 students enrolled?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And I've been corresponding back and forth trying to get a simple yes or no answer in regards to schools that are open right now to service the 1,200 students that we have currently attending. Are all facilities open right now?
Dr. Walts?
Yes, all schools are open.
So we're talking about 100 facilities open to accommodate 1,200 students?
Dr. Walts?
Yes, all the schools have to be...
You're muted, Dr. Walts.
Thank you. Yes, all schools are open for a variety of reasons. We still have to process and play all bills that are coming in, to receive the mail, to do our food distribution. We have over 50 schools that are involved in that in addition to the teaching and learning components. We have to have inspections constantly, cleaning, making sure that the HVAC systems are working. Some people thought, well, we could just shut everything down in the summer and save a lot of money, but we had huge HVAC issues with mold and that type of thing. All the buildings have to be open in order to do approved maintenance and proactive maintenance as well as facilities improvements that are ongoing.
Thank you. You know, I asked the question because this has to do with cost savings. I understand that this may be something that needed to happen because of the pandemic. The reason why I ask is because we don't open every single school during summer school. So is this course of action taken because of the pandemic, or is this something that normally the school system does even in normal circumstances?
Yes, schools remain open year-round even in normal circumstances, with the exception of a small number of days.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also wanted to add to Ms. Vega's question that we have special education students in different various schools, so the idea is so that they maintain their school location and the least change is possible. So it sort of sounded like you were saying in summer school, we tend to group our students together. That's not really ideal for our special education students. Where they're attending school, you really want to kind of keep them there in their environment that they're used to. So that's another reason why we keep the schools open as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Canlin.
Yeah, thank you. This is more out of curiosity, as I was thinking of this. How much would you say of this CARES Act funding is sunk cost? So in other words, when the schools go back to being in person, these would not be, these programs or services would not be carried over to going back to school? And I guess this leads to, one, I'm interested in another, because I think that'd be interesting, and that's understood. I'm not, it's not an accusatory question at all.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But then I guess, secondly, are you expecting a lot of this, are you expecting any of this CARES Act funding projects, personnel, programs to be carried over to next year where we have to, you're going to be coming to the board asking for more money to fund these newly created positions, programs?
So that's great. I'll answer it, and then if Mr. Wallingford or Dr. Walts would jump in. If, so fortunately, because of all the monies you guys gave us, most of it went to technology upgrades and computers, as Ms. Lawson pointed out, and upgrading to technology upgrades and computers, as Ms. Lawson pointed out, and upgrading us to where we had a four-year technology plan that we consolidated in four months. And I have to tell you, not only did we do that, professional development went on, our teachers have carried in an incredible load, right? So the virtual program rolled out in, you know, is it perfect for everyone? No. And as you heard some of our citizens speak tonight, we heard 60 more last week, where, you know, it works, it doesn't work, but it's working better than the spring. I think universally, most would say that, and so we've been able to, because of all the work you guys have done for us, and what we've done, and what our teachers are doing on a daily basis, virtual is better today than it was on September 8th. It's better today than it was on, you know, October 1, and it'll keep getting better, and hopefully, as we go back, the hybrid will do the same thing. So the money you've provided, so when you say sunk costs, right, so the computer and the laptops are going to be with the kids as they go back and forth from school on the hybrid model, and for next year as well, you know, these are costs you've helped. As far as personnel, Mr. Wallingford or Dr. Walts, can you address, have we hired more people to an extent that's significant for pandemic-related causes that would increase our needs next year, moving forward?
I'll start off by saying that that would be on a limited basis. I do want to mention the fact that, as I know all of you are aware, technology costs are ongoing. So what this helps do is to accelerate the technology plan that Mr. Guilfoyle mentioned over a four-year period. That being said, there are enormous ongoing costs and the need to refresh computers every few years, so there's a lot of costs associated with that. The actual COVID-specific hires have been fairly limited to, like, urgent matters that may have to do with human resources or finance and support services, where we literally have hundreds of individual conversations that have to be had between our HR specialists and, say, for example, tier-one employees, to see if there's any possibility to mitigate their tier-one issues in order for them to come back in person. That's just one example, but we have others. So there are a small number of those. However, we try to add a few positions every year. As you know, being a big, growing school division, in the almost 16 years now since I've been here, we've grown by close to 25,000 students, and I think I'm getting ready to help us open the 25th brand-new school on time and within budget. So when you have those kinds of operational increases, you're going to need a few staff members. So that would be a small number in terms of central office. At the school-based level, the biggest increase that we're doing is teaching assistance. We're getting some additional teaching assistance that are very critical during this time. We're also having some additional folks in terms of our health services. We've got a couple of additional employees, I think it's three so far that I've approved, that have to do with our nursing services program under Teresa Polk and Gina Bellamy. One of the things that you may or may not be aware of, that I think is important for you to know, believe it or not, with the Great Recession and all the challenges we've had, we are like leading the state in terms of health services. It's under the direction of Teresa Polk, but she is assisted by Gina Bellamy, who is actually the president currently of the State Nurses' Association, and we are the proud leaders in the state in terms of having a nurse, an actual nurse, in every building, and that was just achieved about a year ago. So we have, I believe it's three that I've approved so far, health aides and another nurse to float if needed, and we're also going to have some continuing conversations about health aides in the days to come. You may be aware that on our website, you can go, and you can click and see the cases by school. Again, this is in an effort to be transparent. A few years back, you may remember when MRSA was the big, high-profile health hiding the fact that we had cases. So we actually created this ability for the general public to go in. The MRSA issue was big, and place every school where we had a new confirmed case. So we're doing the same thing with COVID, and you can see by looking at that list, we try to update that every day or two, that we have students and faculty from across the school division, school after school. COVID knows no boundaries, so you would be amazed at the number of schools, and there were several additional ones today, and I think we're now up to, I think it's 90-some confirmed cases since schools opened. And, you know, people, I know there's a lot of various opinions about virtual, but whenever it's an in-person COVID, we send a letter to the community, and of course, you have to do extensive contract tracing and quarantining. We already have two schools under full or partial quarantine, in addition to several central office and school-based administrators at one team, from the unfortunate transmission when the first lady visited the preschool at Washington Reed, and then we have two other schools. So with 90-some people, actually, probably, I don't want to give a percentage, but quite a number of those, we didn't have to notify the whole community, because the teachers were involved virtually, as well as the students that were identified. But I'm quite concerned about if we had all of that in-person, the number of cases we would have, I believe, would far exceed the 90.
Mr. Cannon. Okay, I'm trying to remember what my question was. The, so the policy of the Board of County Supervisors traditionally has been one-time monies are spent on one-time expenses, and I guess that's where I was trying to get at, is how much is this, it sounds like some are being used on ongoing expenses, but from what I've heard, it sounds like a lot of those expenses were going to be in future budgets anyway. So in one sense, you're just getting a head start on some of those ongoing expenses. I think that's what I heard.
Yeah, I think that's accurate, and recognize that we can only spend it on what the federal government says we can spend it on, COVID-related 19, and computers is the vast majority of what localities nationwide have spent it on, because we're not much different. I mean, very few schools in the state of Virginia are one-to-one. I think Loudoun County was one-to-one at some of their, not, I don't even know if they were, they weren't even one-to-one at their entire school division levels. They, one-to-one meaning every student had a computer, they were at the high school middle, and I think they went all elementary. So we've gone to everybody, and we're trying to get to everybody, and hopefully by January, we will be with everybody on a good computer.
Mr. Chairman, if I may follow up with a, I guess one of the concerns that I've been hearing from folks, and maybe this is a good chance to educate me a little bit more, or the folks that I'm hearing from home, or that are home, a lot of the expenses are being put into virtual learning. And there's some, obviously, to some of the kids who need to be in-person, so I don't want to diminish those expenses, but I think there's just some concern from folks, or at least the families that I'm hearing from, is all this, a lot of this CARES Act money is not going towards getting kids in school in person, back to a 50-50 model at a minimum. And I guess that's the concern I'm hearing from a lot of folks, is we're taking all this money, 54 million, I think is what I added up, that the school has gotten in various CARE Act funding, and it doesn't seem like a lot, any of that money, or some of that money, very little of that money, is actually going towards getting kids back in-person learning.
So I mean, I think that, the way I would look at that, and I certainly would have Dr. Walts weigh in as well, but the 50-50 will only work if we have computers for everyone. So remember, so 50-50 has to, and will only function, and kids getting back in the school division will only function as long as we get everyone a computer, because if you're only here two days, which is the hybrid, you're going to be home three days. And so we have to equip everybody to handle that part of it. And the intention, as we brought up with you in the summer, was that we don't know what this virus is going to do. We don't know if we're going to float back and forth between full, virtual, hybrid, back, full in, how we're going to do this until we have a vaccine. And so most of the money has gone to that, and I would say that, you know, the computers are going to help us get kids back in. If we didn't have the computers, I mean, I think it would be much more challenging to do this. We'd be, you know, dropping packets off at people's houses, and I don't know how you do that. But very good point, Mr. Cannon, and I have to tell you, we've heard from, we get hundreds of emails, and we've heard all of those concerns, and everyone in the division, I think, Dr. Walts, all of us are sensitive to those concerns. Dr. Walts, did I get that right? Can you unmute?
Yes, you did.
All right, well, thanks. But it's understood, Mr. Cannon, your point well-taken. Is that Ms. Jessie?
I'm at home. I think that when we look at whether or not we're spending money on 50-50, when you look at the amount of money that's been invested in PPP, that is to provide safety for students when students come into the building. I've been an advocate of health aides, and I think Dr. Walts said to me earlier that he's going to be looking at that, and you haven't lived until you've worked with a kindergartner. They are off-task or living, and they're very good at it. So having additional people there in those kindergarten classrooms are, is very important. I think I was not one of the people who asked for this, but other people, other individuals, like Dr. Walts' office, or Mr. Ashiroki's office, have added aides on the bus. I get concerns from bus drivers, because bus drivers are required, you know, we have to minimize the number of students on buses. And the bus drivers are driving the bus and hoping to keep those kids seated at the same time. So they really do need to have another person. I think the cost for people is not as costly as the cost for the equipment and all of the things that come with technology. So I think that's where the situation is. The other thing is, my understanding is that the CARES money is a one-time expenditure, so I'm not sure we can look at adding contractual kinds of personnel situations. But I think down the road, we are, I don't think we know what we're going to need down the road, because we're just in something that we've never been in. I've been in the school system, I've been a principal for 20 years there, and I've had fire drills, I've had bussy-back drills, and I see Jarson looking in, and she knows, we, all these, all these Associate Superintendents know, that we've had bus drills, we've had bussy-back drills, we've had fire drills, we've had tornado drills, we've had intrudy drills. There is no drill for COVID. You can't have a drill for it. So the safety of teachers and kids is paramount, and I think anything that we can do to keep kids safe is something that I'm advocating for, and I think we're getting towards that. But I don't think it's going to be as, and I could be wrong on this, and someone with a background in budget can probably say it better than I can, but I don't think the cost for those items are going to be as costly as bandwidth and, you know, the cloud situations that you're looking at, and equity in the computer situation. We've got kids in these lower-income schools that don't have access to, they don't have the computers, they don't have the bed, they don't have Wi-Fi. There are all kinds of issues that are student-related, but are technologically related. There was a research study at Harvard, and it said the following, "There are no good choices." And so I know parents are concerned about kids being in schools, but what's very different about this school system, and I'm going to end with this, is that there's this thing I call a density and duration. You have, you don't have the same-sized schools that other school systems have. I understand we went to Culpeper. Culpeper has a graduate, has a high school of 800 kids, maybe. That's a graduation class for us. And so when you've got high numbers of kids in middle and high who can carry the virus, can get COVID, the COVID virus, there is a different type of plan that's going to take place. So thank you for allowing me to just share my views on it, because this is very, very different people. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bodie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So to piggyback a little bit off my fellow OAKA colleague, and to go back to something that Supervisor Cannon discussed, it seems like we're in a place now, we're finally almost finished laying down that foundation, that solid foundation to be able to make this system resilient enough, depending on how things go in the months ahead. I guess my question, it goes back to something that was mentioned earlier, is the delivery of health services, because we had a conversation as a Board of Supervisors earlier about how the delivery of services through telehealth and things like that have expanded greatly over the last nine months. Is that one of the costs that you guys have built into your original ask and ongoing? Because I would imagine that, I think it was four or five months ago, you guys unveiled the fact that you're still offering a lot of your counseling services, mental health services for students, things like that. Is that being contemplated as we move forward as well?
So the survey data and what we've asked the parents to fill out, and it's about 50-50, maybe it's a little bit more, wanting to stay virtual now. We have 50, over 50% of the population of students want to remain virtual for the rest of the year. So those services will be having to have to be made for all of them for 50% of the year. We don't know what next year we'll have, but there will be 50% of the students at least doing that. And remember, when we do the hybrid, three days of the week, those students will be at home as well. So we'll have a hybrid for the other 50%. So the PPE, as Ms. Jessie pointed out, will help us get kids in the building. I can tell you that our finance team and folks have spent a lot of money, bought a lot of PPE. I can tell you that the PPE they have here in the schools are better than what most physicians and hospitals have. The N95s only go to nurses who are doing aerosolizations in rooms with positive COVID patients. Otherwise, we're not wearing N95s. So N95s are particularly hard to get, and are only used when you're changing a tube out on someone with COVID-19. But if I walk into a patient room right now, I'm not giving them N95. I get similar mask of what I'm wearing now. So our teachers, though, we have N95s, we have things in face shields and all the kinds of things that we want to be able to make it possible to get in. We don't believe, I think the whole board would tell you, that it is not, you know, getting students in and getting them educated are not mutually exclusive. We want to do both, and we just want to do them safely.
Last thing, I just wanted to commend you and the school nurses and everyone that jumped in to help us on our end when it came to helping with our COVID response. You know, we had a discussion about that earlier, where school nurses really stepped up in an unprecedented way, and I wanted to commend you guys about that as well. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think our next item is going to be something where we've done some really good work together, and I'm excited to hear from the staff about that work. Mr. Angry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just back to the all schools being open questions and comments. Are any teachers teaching out of the classroom for Zoom purposes?
Yes, there are. It's not mandated, but there are, and they're doing that by choice. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we have teachers teaching, because they don't have internet service in their homes, so they come and utilize their classrooms. And then we also have our special education students who are here four days a week in person right now, and we continue to add those. But I also wanted to mention, we don't talk about often some of the smaller items, but are equally important. Dr. Walts mentioned at our last board meeting, things like water stations, where students can bring in their own water bottles, because you cannot use, utilize water fountains in the school buildings right now, the amount of money that we spent on plexiglass, one-directional signage and flows in the schools, so that when we do bring in larger numbers of students, because we have students in right now, and we'll continue to grow that number, that they're safe in the hallways, and that we have the proper setup for them when the numbers increase. So just to be mindful of that, because we do talk a lot about technology, but we don't talk about the smaller things that make for quality education for our staff and our students when they're in the building as well.
Now, I think, was there a hand, Mr. Cannon?
Or is it, I kind of lost track. Is it okay if I go into C about opening the schools?
So what, you know, since we have that on there, let's do the collaboration thing, and we'll go to the reopening stuff, because that'll go towards what we're asking for, what we're going to spend the next monies on, and I think that makes sense. Just last, and we'll wrap up this discussion. Another thank you to all of you, you know, look, we were able to get 1,200 students in special ed. We're the only division in Northern Virginia to do that, starting September 8. One can argue and say, you know, we haven't been as aggressive about going in and things like that, but we have done really, in a Herculean effort to get those kids in, and it's been amazing, and they've done a great job, the And it's been amazing and they've done a great job. The staff, the special education teachers, our administration must be committed, our instructional leadership, our finance team, and you all for helping us do that. That is a lot of work and we want to hopefully be able to come back to you in two or three months and say, everything you guys have done for us has helped us get the students back in the buildings. That's what ultimately is our goal. And so we want to come back here and say to you, listen, thank you once again. So I'll move on to the next item and then we'll do the reopening questions at 1.06. 1.05 is the county schools collabora, county and schools collaboration on childcare grant of $2 million. Who will be discussing that? Is that, is that Mr. Martino, Ms. Casiato, or is it me? I hope it's not me.
Well, I can share our, what we've gone through, working with county staff and the school staff, as you indicated.
Yeah, tell us how it started, Mr. Martino, and what did we accomplish with this?
Well, we have stood up our EOC, as you know, and we've been scaling up to meet the demands of the day of the past six months and-
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Lawson.
I am so sorry to interrupt you, but there are folks here that have no idea what an EOC is. Do you, do you just mind?
Okay.
Thank you. I just, I know people are probably sitting there wondering.
The EOC is our emergency operations center, which we typically activate for blizzards and hurricanes and floods. And we activated it back in March to deal with the pandemic when it became, came upon us and before we knew what it all entailed. And it is, follows the incident management protocol so that we can scale up to meet whatever the issue of the day is. And we have created various task forces over the course of the past six months to deal with feeding and homeless and housing and cleaning buildings, all of PPE, all of those kind of things. So a month or so ago, well, it's been a discussion, ongoing discussion, but in tracking what the schools have been dealing with and when you may or may not go back into class, at the same time, we are monitoring the economy and we realize, in order for the economy to recover, the local economy, small businesses, and for our folks to get back to work, childcare is pretty important. And regular school, day schools are pretty critical to underlying that too. So we stood up a school task force, school reopening task force, and focused on childcare to try and crack that nut. It was very difficult also, but there's an economic recovery part to this. So we've been working with county staff and the school staff. And you have already had for many years in your after-school, preschool and after-school program, a contract with the company Alphabet. I think I got that right. And so we worked with that contract and are providing funding through the IDA, which we typically use for economic development prospects, to pass money through the IDA to our economic development clients. So we're passing the money through the IDA to Alphabet to provide scholarships to children, parents, children. The board had a good discussion about this, about whether we give the money directly to the small businesses, namely the childcare companies. There was a great interest in making sure it went to the households. And so that's why this arrangement that we set up works best in getting the money very quickly through an existing contract through the IDA to, to the folks for these scholarships. And so at that point, now we're, perhaps someone on your team can update us on the enrollment and Alphabet also has the ability to scale up to more locations depending on demand. So that's, that's a quick overview of the program, where we stand today pending the enrollment.
Thank you. Dr. Walts?
Sure. Yes, and by the way, the Alphabet locations are another reason that we have all the schools open. So we have those spread out at various locations. But at this point, I would like to ask Ms. Denise Heebner to give us a little bit of an update on how we're proceeding with our new partnership there. Ms. Heebner?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So I'm excited to say that we really are making remarkable progress. When we first saw this was happening, we knew this was happening. We immediately sought to expand our current capacity in the locations that we already had up and running. So in a very short time since the grant was announced publicly, we've been able to increase our capacity of seats from about 350 seats to about 550. So we currently have all, we have 109 vacant seats and we do have families on the waiting list for those available seats. They're just in the process of completing their paperwork. We are currently working to expand our sites and our locations by fives, by groups of five. So we anticipate that we'll have about 30 locations total and be able to serve through the grant at least 1,000 families. So the enrollments keep coming in and they are processing, but we are somewhere in the range of being able to accommodate about 550 families at this point in time, our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for any of them? Ms. Lawson?
Thank you. Ms. Huber, Huber, I'm sorry, can you clarify that? Is that, you have 550 seats through the Alphabet program specifically for scholarships? Or those are already families that are utilizing Alphabet and paying through their own funding? I'm a little confused.
Sure. It's a combination. I don't have a breakdown of who's actually utilizing a scholarship and who's a tuition-based student. That information would have to come through Alphabet and I don't have privilege to that. But we are expanding our opportunities so that people can take advantage of the grant. People who are currently previously enrolled do have the opportunity to apply for those same funds, so it would be a combination of both.
Okay. If I can, so I guess what I'm imagining or what I'm picturing is 100, we have 100 facilities essentially, and Alphabet can only offer 550 seats or kids because of spacing, social distancing. Is that why? Because that number seems really low to me. I'm sure that Alphabet in a normal school year has far more and higher enrollment. Is that why that 550 capacity is so low compared to what would be the norm?
So the team at Alphabet and our schools are working to accommodate based on need. As the enrollment increases, we are increasing the capacity as well. When the pandemic hit, Alphabet, like many people, had to reduce their workforce. And so they went from about 2,400 employees down to about 24 employees. So as the enrollments come in, they're reactivating their workforce and dedicating site managers so that they can expand the offerings. And they're doing that as quickly as possible. They've been excellent partners and they fully intend to expand into as many schools as possible based on need as they're able to staff up.
Okay. So they have capacity to accommodate more than 550 kids?
We do. We have space in our buildings, our schools are ready to accommodate the programs, and Alphabet is working to make sure that they have site managers and employees who can support the childcare at each site. And they're doing that as swiftly as possible as the enrollment increases. So they do have the ability to expand that as people enroll.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Ms. Vega?
Thank you, Chairman Latif. I have a question and perhaps the attorney can best answer. I've received a handful of emails of folks questioning the legality of us going with Alphabet in terms of that being the only provider that folks can go to in terms of, you know, applying for assistance for childcare. What response can we give to those folks who are wondering why there is, there aren't more options on the table and why we specifically went with Alphabet?
I mean, I'll turn that over to Mr. Martino or Ms. Robel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, members of both boards. As you heard Mr. Martino state, county staff and school staff are working with the IDA, the Industrial Development Authority. And the IDA, both school council, our office and the IDA's attorney worked on this. It's a policy decision on how the IDA wants to go through and working with county staff on dispersing this. It's very similar to the various small business grants that were provided in the very beginning. There are going to be some people that don't receive it, but some people that do. In working with the school staff, this was the best way to utilize the funds in the most efficient manner. It is a legal option and that has been explained to people that have made some complaints about it. It's the best way to make the best use of the funds to impact the most number of families. And it's, in my opinion, is legal.
And I think there's, Ms. Robel, I guess, or Ms. Martino, we have to spend these monies by a certain time, correct? Their CARES monies.
Absolutely. December 30th, and it has to be utilized beforehand. So a lot of people are putting that November 30th time period-
Yeah, November 30th is the deadline we're sort of looking at. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Bailey?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I understand these are funded for the school, but does that mean, the board had talked about the utilizing in terms of what Supervisor Baker was saying, other facilities? So does that mean that the Boys and Girls Club is no longer part of that equation based on that decision? But we had talked about-
We had talked about the Boys and Girls Club as well. So is that not a part of this decision or is it something separate?
Separate and aside from this initiative, the board has transferred another $150,000 to the Boys and Girls Club because they have had a very robust childcare and feeding program going on. So that was $250,000 grants that the board has provided to the Boys and Girls Club.
Okay. Okay. And I merely ask because of what Supervisor Baker was referring to. I know that was something we discussed in the board. That's why I brought it.
Right. Right. And the timing, another big concern was making this childcare option available as quickly as possible. This was the absolute quickest we could do anything.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bodie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just quick sort of logistics, looking at this long-term, because obviously this is a quick and dirty on how to get this done and out of the gate and available to families as soon as possible. You know, is this, does this take them through the end of the school year? Like, how long do we see this going in terms of how this, how long this will take folks in terms of the childcare and where the end line is? And what we're looking at in terms of making this a longer-term goal?
I believe this gets us through year end. Michelle?
This gets us to December 30th?
Right.
Because we're utilizing CARES Act funding. Beyond that, there is no additional funding.
Right. So the math is, this should get us to December 30th for about 1,000 kids, 1,000 scholarships.
It's a remarkably quick and, and an amazing process you guys were able to put together. So I want to thank Ms. Casiato, Mr. Martino, Ms. Robel, Mr. Wallingford, Ms. Heebner, Dr. Walts, for all of your effort for putting this together rather quickly and addressing these, hopefully, 1,000 kids. Ms. Lawson?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I'll just say, our board isn't always unanimous, but on this topic last Tuesday, I believe we were very unanimous in, you know, expressing that we want this to go to families, not necessarily to daycare providers, but we want to utilize this money to support the families that need it. And so thank you to staff and everybody else that made that happen because I think that was a very strong consensus among our board.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, Ms. Robel and then Mr. Angry.
I just wanted to add also, county staff has pointed out to those various private daycare providers that are concerned about it, there is the availability for them to apply for the small business grants through the Economic Development Department and utilize funds that way. So there are multiple areas for the private providers to try and access some of these funds. Thank you.
Well, thank you for bringing up that point. Mr. Angry?
And thank you, Ms. Robel, because that was kind of a comment I wanted to make. You know, these are, they aren't easy decisions, but as you've heard, we got to spend this money literally by the end of the year. The only thing that would save this is if, in fact, you know, the state extended this to next year. So we don't have a lot of time on that one to hear that, so we have to act with what we know. So I know a lot of different companies, people have been upset with the decisions, but at this point, it's never going to be, as someone said, oh, it's never going to be, we, there is no right decision because we have to make a decision. And so if things extend out, that would be very good for all of us. But so we can only wait and see what happens with that. Just wanted to make that comment, though. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Wheeler? Oh, sorry. Then Ms. Vega. Ms. Wheeler?
I just, I just want to say, you know, thank you to the school system and really to our staff working with the school system and the things that we've done. As a county, I think we've had a great deal of success during the pandemic and we haven't run into some of the problems that other places have run into. And we've done a lot of great things with the money that came through. And I, so I commend you all for, you know, this is really putting us to the future. Because even 50/50, we'll always be using computers and you'll need the bandwidth for people who are hybrid and things like that. And I just really want to commend everyone because I think as a county, we've done a really good job.
And Ms. Lawson echoes, the unanimity of all the issues you guys have done dealing with schools childcare this year has been remarkable and we're all grateful for that. So thank you very much. I think we'll move on next to one-
Mr. Chairman.
No, I'm sorry, Ms. Vega, sorry.
If it, if it hasn't already been thought of, I would like to request a report for both boards in terms of how many folks applied. As we're talking about moving forward, we obviously have a deadline by, you know, December 30th, like Mr. Martino stated, in terms of funds being utilized. But if this is going to be a reoccurring need within the community and in terms of talking about revitalizing our economy and kicking things back up, I think it's important for us to know what the numbers are, who applied, and how we can continue to assist folks with childcare moving forward.
Absolutely. Okay. We'll move on to 1.06, further pandemic-related budgetary needs for the reopening of Prince William County schools. I think you all, we have a slide I saw that we had up a few minutes ago on the CRF, needs moving forward or spending moving forward, if someone can find us that slide. Dr. Walts, did you have a presentation on this?
So I have staff prepared to talk a little bit about some potential uses of additional funding. And we'll start off with Mr. Shiroki on the first two items, please.
Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, members of the board. The first two items for utilizing the funds, the first is the identification of using Plexiglas within our buildings. And what we have done is we have focused on our highly public traveled areas where people are interacting continually, as well as looking at cases where there are isolated cases where people have to have one-on-one interaction for longer durations of time. The buses itself, those are costs that are associated with the purchase of equipment that is going on to the buses that are related to the cleaning as well as the infrastructure. And I'll defer for the next items to the next staff member.
Yes, that'll be Mr. Guilfoyle, please, on the next two items.
Yes. So as part of our digital equity, we have been primarily focusing on students, of course, as the first priority. And as we move to the hybrid model and beyond, of course, one of the questions that was asked earlier is what are we doing to get ready for teachers to be back in the classroom? And as Dr. Latif pointed out, that many of our students, more than 50%, want to remain virtual. So that may necessitate in all likelihood the requirement of our teachers to teach what we call hybrid, meaning that they'll need to teach both students in front of them in the classroom physically, as well as students that are joining that classroom virtually through Zoom or other means. So what this includes here is additional computers to update and refresh our teachers' computers primarily. Many of them, their computers are older, they may be running off of an old desktop, for example. And our goal here would be to bring them up to something that is on par with what their students have so that they can be most effective for that hybrid classroom teaching model. And then related to that is what we call the sort of classroom peripheral support. So as you can imagine, plugging in all these laptops, devices, web cameras, et cetera, requires additional plugs, USB cords, extension cords, et cetera. And so many principals have come to me asking, please, can we get additional support for our schools for those needs? And so that's why this is included here.
Thank you, Mr. Guilfoyle. And we'll bring up the end with Associate Superintendent Goss on professional learning and student learning.
Yes, good evening. This 2.4 million includes costs- Yes, good evening. This 2.4 million includes costs for professional development. I'm sure you can imagine the professional development that is needed at this time in order to support teachers in both the virtual as well as the simultaneous hybrid model is really important. This will pay for outside folks to come in and provide that professional development as well as the creation of professional development here in the school division. This also will pay for online subscriptions for the division for additional independent reading books, books to provide a small group or group instruction. This pays for software to support our music education program, which allows students to play their instruments at home and get feedback around the reading of music and the tone of their instrument. It allows for support with mathematics, for our CTE program in which our students really need to do that high level of computing that's needed beyond what the laptops can support. So this allows for us to use a cloud computing. So there are a number of supports for the instructional program that support both the virtual as well as that hybrid model that we were speaking of earlier that has students in person as well at, at home, learning synchronously and asynchronously.
Anything further, Dr. Walts?
Let me just look at one. Again, we have this $3.1 million for the teacher hybrid support. Do we have a slide on that? Here we go. Okay, great. And I don't know if Ms. Goss or Mr. Guilfoyle or both of you would like to comment on that. I'll, I'll start with the technical side of it with Mr. Guilfoyle.
Certainly. So again, this goes to that need of how are we going to move towards that in-person learning while supporting the virtual learning. So this is something that we have already ordered. That is a wireless headset and a web camera for all of our teachers. And essentially what this is, is basically the ability for the teacher to wear a microphone in the, in the classroom while teaching in order for the students online on Zoom to be able to listening, listen in. And then the web camera that can follow the teacher or can be placed in a position wherever the teacher needs it so that they can use that for teaching. So these, again, the goal is to have these in teachers' hands start of the second quarter. And we'll be, again, to use those and so that way use for those instructional purposes.
And then Ms. Goss, please.
So as Mr. Guilfoyle was saying, this supports both the virtual instruction. It allows teachers to teach from their classroom to students virtually at home. And it allows them also to give more live virtual time to those students who are not attending in person. So that's where the hybrid simultaneous model comes in. And we will be professionally developing teachers for the use of this equipment, but also ways in which to plan and implement instruction and deliver instruction utilizing this equipment in the classroom as we move forward.
Okay. Anything further, Dr. Walts?
No, thank you.
Okay, great. And I guess at this point, so that would be how we would spend that 15.9 million moving forward that we're voting on this evening. So if you have any questions, I think this would be the time to ask about reopening issues in regards to the budgetary requests.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Angry.
I just, the question I asked originally, this, that briefing just really answered my question about are teachers teaching in the classroom? Because what I was asking was, I'm sorry, let me do this. What, what my original question that I was asking was, are they in the classroom teaching virtually, using their classroom as a base? But what you just provided really is the answer because they need the technology and the equipment in the classroom to be able to do that. So this is where we are to get the classroom outfitted with this so that they can be able to do that. And now by the time you have that, you'll be doing this hybrid, virtual and in-classroom all-in-one, which makes a lot of sense. So I, I don't know if folks out there were thinking that teachers could just walk in the classroom and use their classroom to teach, probably unless they brought their laptop and they set it on a desk and use the camera to kind of outward look, which would be very kind of prehistoric. So that wouldn't really work. So, so this really answers my question and gives me a lot more clarity to that answer. So I see moving forward why this is important. So just wanted to clean that up. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bodie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So two questions. One, sort of looking ahead at this because something that Mrs. Jesse brought up was health aids. And I would imagine that as we start to get more folks into classrooms and more kids into, into their learning, in-person learning environment, we're going to need more folks to sort of help monitor the schools. I know that Ms. Williams talked about single directional signs, things of that nature. They're going to need hall monitors, people to watch that. You have the bus drivers. As we pair up, are these those additional costs contemplating that additional manpower? And two, what I think is more importantly is, we had a discussion earlier to go back to it about mental health and is there going to be contemplated more social workers, mental health specialists, those kinds of folks? They have to deal with the fact there's going to be a lot of kids who have been isolated for months that may need additional help that they didn't have before. More folks that, you know, they will be able to see their friends, but it'll be a lot different. It'll be weirder. They won't be able to see certain people certain days. Is that sort of contemplating the cost as well?
I mean, I'll, I'll defer the question to Dr. Walts, but before I do that, I would say that every single teacher, administrator, social worker and counselor are working just enormous hours to do things we've never asked them to do before. And, and everything is harder. And I think we've heard from all of our teachers on that. Everything, the, asking them to go back in and teach with a headset from the classroom has created enormous anxiety. A lot of professional development, you know, many ask why we haven't gotten in yet. You know, there's a lot of reasons for why we haven't gotten in. But the logistics of all of this, as you hear, for every good idea, there are intended consequences and then many more unintended consequences that then have their own set of questions and solutions that we must solve for. But I'll go to Dr. Walts on, on that question from Mr. Bodie. Dr. Walts? I can't. Can you unmute, Dr. Walts?
Okay, good. So what we do is we continue to monitor our staffing needs literally on a daily and weekly basis. At first, we, because, you know, again, I've, I've been superintendent through a lot more lean years than, than good years with the 10-year Great Recession that we all had to deal with. And so having been a former Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources in an even larger district, thankfully, I've had a number of years of experience with that. And that's the biggest driver in a budget cost is personnel expense in a school division and the associated benefits that come along with that. So one of the things that we did is we had a person that we brought in through their Retirement Opportunity Program, our ROP program. And we've literally redeployed a number of employees into jobs that are, are not the job they currently have, but it's a need in the system. And it kept them, you know, gainfully employed, which is very, very important. This healthcare and, and child-related childcare issues are very, very big in our school division as well. So for example, we have, it's over 150 employees that we've required to come back. But because of their salaries, it's such that they can't afford the childcare on the salaries that they make. So part of what the federal government has done is created a 12-week window where employees up to a certain threshold of salary can earn 2/3 of their salary. We were able to legally also allow them to supplement that missing 1/3 if they had personal days that they had not used. And so in doing that, we were able to redistribute any number of employees to do other jobs. But as we bring in more students, we will continue to have to look at what those needs are. So again, in our health plan, and I'm going to defer to Ms. Hevner again, who's, by the way, chairs our pandemic team. And because I think humor is sometimes important in the midst of a crisis, just so you know, we, we have a number of jobs that every year we review a most responsible person to do MVP or MRP, to do certain jobs in addition to their regular job. And when Denise accepted the job of Chair of the Pandemic Team, which we had a team in place for a number of years, as did the county, and we were partners in, in some of that planning, our Deputy Superintendent Keith Eamon, Emon, rather, Mr. Emon said, Denise, why don't you do this job because there hasn't been anything for several years, so it probably won't involve you doing anything? And actually, it is a full-time job. But, but at any rate, as we continue to bring more students in, we have to look at these issues around mental health. One thing that is another, it's like having a nurse in every school. In the last budget in which you helped support us, we were, the last two budgets, actually, between what happened at the state funding level and also the local funding level, we were able to add a large number of counselors and a small number of social workers and an even smaller number of psychologists. But it was a larger infusion of those employees than we were able to do in, in over a decade. So thankfully, those folks are in place. And on Mondays, which is our virtual day that students and parents can actually set up appointments, they can set counseling appointments, they can get a one-on-one Zoom appointment. We are, we are addressing the mental health issues. We have also have a number of professional development opportunities that are online to help teachers be better prepared to spot kids that are having issues, to work with them, to identify them. We did a secondary survey of our secondary students in terms of letting us know if they needed some mental health support. And we just completed that last week. So Ms. Hevner, I'll give you a chance to wrap that up a bit, please.
Sure. You know, as a division, from the very start of the pandemic, you know, under Dr. Walts' leadership, we have put our, our families, our staff and our students in social and emotional health and wellbeing at the forefront of our decision-making. Immediately when we shut down, we implemented a response system through email where if any, any student, we actually had students from private schools as well in Prince William County reaching out, just getting guidance and support from our counselors. So our counselors have been all in. Additionally, the additional funding that we've received has allowed us to implement some different aspects that will help support our staff and our students. Excuse me. We have implemented the use of Cognito, which is a program that helps our staff recognize mental health and social, emotional needs of children that's available for training. It's an avatar-based software that helps build understanding and helps us deliver mental health support to our students. Additionally, we are looking at implementing a social screener, the BaaS, that our social workers could take, could use in order to do targeted support to some of the students who we identified that may be experiencing some trauma. We've offered professional development through our offices on adverse childhood experiences, which helps our staff. We have over 3,000 staff members that have been trained. We have taken part in Train the Trainer models, which allows us to provide a support at the school level for youth mental health first aid training so that our school teams are equipped to respond to students who are experiencing some difficulty or considering self-harm so that we can intervene and get them the right services and the support that they need socially and emotionally. I think overall, we recognize that as we return, our counselors have a difficult job ahead of them and our social workers. And we are looking at how we can deliver the most support with the staff that we have, but definitely letting Dr. Walts know and keeping everyone informed of the needs of our community and our students as we return to learning. I hope that gives you an overview of some of the things that we're doing to support our students.
Thank you for that. One final question, Mr. Chairman. I hate to grill everyone, but the last thing I wanted to ask about is feeding. Obviously, the school division has been a leader in, in the Commonwealth in terms of feeding our students right out of, out of the gate. So I wanted to commend you on that. But obviously, as we shift more and more students going into school buildings, I'd imagine the nature of feeding changes too because, you know, it was before, you know, they would take food for a number of days or at least for two meals and what have you, especially over the weekend. But now you're going to have kids, like was said, two days in, two days out, three days in, that kind of hybrid model. So how is that going to change and is going to be additional costs in terms of manpower for that? Because as I understand, there were people were shifted or reprogrammed to help with that, but they may be having to balance their two jobs, helping with that and helping with their normal duties. So how's that look?
I'll turn that to Dr. Walts, but before I say that, I think the, the one area that I think the entire board doesn't lose a bit of sleep on is our nutrition and food services. They are, have done beyond a stellar job. So whatever questions or concerns you have about changes, they will address it. I have no doubt. Dr. Walts?
Thank you, Chairman Latif. So in our feeding program, which, you know, again, it's like, you know, a rising tide lifts all ships. I think that one of the things that's so important during what we're experiencing is to celebrate the things that are going well. Believe me, we know what needs improvement. But we can all be proud of taking care of our community through our food program. So under the leadership of Associate Superintendent Al Shiroki and Director Adam Russo, we have the envy of, of the state in terms of how we have very creatively been able to get grants to do way more than we thought we would originally be able to. But one of the things I'll just mention and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Shiroki, and, and we can go from there. So in the, in the summer, when we were under a different phase and we had the ability, we could pay people an additional amount of money as was described earlier tonight, we called on those individuals to help with that food distribution program through that first phase, which was, you know, considered very concerning from a health standpoint. And then when we went into Phase Two, that changed those dynamics. And basically, the pay stayed at, at where it was when they normally would have the job. We also had a number of people assisting with the food distribution over the summer from other parts of the school division that weren't necessarily in food nutrition services. So right now, we again have brought in many, many more of our employees to help as we slowly gear up one of the nation's largest school systems. And, you know, again, just as an aside, I'd like you to keep in mind that we have about 16,000 school divisions in the United States. And Prince William County with 100 schools and almost 90,000 students is the 35th largest of those 16,000. And, you know, sometimes when I hear people talk about, well, you know, we got a lot of schools back in, in, back in play with in-person. So the last briefing that we had on numbers, the state superintendent said approximately 80% of the students were virtual learners in the state. Now, that's probably gone down a little bit as systems move into place. But the average-sized school system in America is between 3,500 and 4,000 students, the whole school system. So it is something to ramp down and ramp back up a school division of this size and to do it well. You may be aware that a week from, a week ago last Sunday, New York City announced that after only two weeks of school, they were closing over 100 schools. And so we, we want to do this right. We want to get the kids back. We want to continue the food distribution. And so we have bifurcated and we actually are still doing the pickup at the curbside in addition to taking care of the students in person and will continue to do so. We can't lay out exactly how all of this will work, but I will ask Mr. Shiroki to at least tell us a little bit about what he sees happening in this next couple groups of students coming back in person and continuing our other distribution that our community so much needs and appreciates. Mr. Shiroki.
Thank you, Dr. Walts.
Thank you, Dr. Waltz. We have been just working day in and day out, to where on average, we have been providing each week over 1 million meal equivalents. Over the entire pandemic before the school year started, we gave out over 2 million meals, and we accomplished that number in the first two weeks of school, starting on September 8th. And part of that was the fact that when we saw that our children, our 1,200 students were returning, but the majority of our School Division was remaining virtual, we chose to participate in a food supplement program where it actually put more food into the hands of our parents, so that they could use that food to supplement the food that they already have within their household. So our primary focus in school nutrition is providing breakfast and lunch to our students. That is our core mission, and we have moved away from that while students are at home virtually and being able to provide food supplements. But as we begin to move students back into our schools physically, you're going to see a hybrid approach occur with food service, where we're going to be feeding more and more students breakfast and lunch, and then the remaining supplement, but then there will still be students that remain at home who will continue to get the supplement that they're receiving today. So you're going to see the pendulum begin to swing back to what we have always done for many years, but as long as we have students that are, continue to be virtual, we will continue to provide those meals to those parents if they come to school on a daily basis, and if they come, it'll be two days a week, we'll provide that supplement, because we want to ensure that our students are healthy and that they are given the nutritional requirements, because be it if their instructions in school or at home, they need to be healthy and fed in order to accomplish that.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Canlin.
Oh, I didn't think I would get that. I thought somebody else would jump in. So I know, I know this is a, is a bad situation for everyone to be in, and I think I've heard it a couple of times, that we've got a lot of different choices, and none of them are very good choices to do. And I commend the School District for the work that they've done. Again, I know that this is not an easy process, what we're trying to do. I've got three schools, three kids in the School District, so I've seen firsthand the impacts of not being in school. And we did hear from Dr. Anshur, I think I got that right, Chair Wheeler, I know her name's been pronounced a few different, pretty different ways. Dr. Anshur, a little bit earlier in talking about the real negative impacts that they've seen, pediatricians have seen on kids being out of school. So I know it is that tough balance of how do you get kids back at school and do it safely, not only for the kids, but also for the teachers and administrators, but also understanding that having kids not in the school offers a great amount of negative impacts too. As we all know, I think most of us graduated school here, schools are not just instructional learning. Schools are clubs, schools are coping skills, schools are hanging out with your friends, schools are putting, teaching independence for kids, being away from their, from their parents for several hours. And it's, and it's a culture that has been curated over the last 200 years in society is that our kids go to school. And I think I join everyone here, now we might have disagreements on how that happens, but I think I join everyone here, that we need to figure out how we get our kids back to school, in-school instruction. And I think one of the concerns that I have, and inform me if I'm incorrect, and I will help communicate this out to folks if this has been published, I think uncertainty is what's impacting a lot of, a lot of families. A lot of families were expecting that they were going to go back to a hybrid, go to a hybrid model with the second quarter, and that ended up not being the case. I keep on hearing the words returning, bringing kids back, almost like we've, it's already been decided when the kids are coming back. So I guess that's my first question, has it been decided when the kids are coming back? And then along with that, if, if it has been decided, great, we've got, we now, and it's guaranteed, now we've got a good path forward, but if it hasn't been decided, have there been metrics published about what this School Board will make their decision on? Again, I think uncertainty is what is really impacting a lot of folks. Is it infections? Is it hospitalizations? Is it, what is that criteria that this School Board's going to use to determine by numbers when the kids go back to school? And maybe that's published, and I apologize if I'm, if I did not know that that is published somewhere, but, and I have another follow-up question, if I may, but I'll just leave that is, has it been decided when kids are going to go back to a hybrid model? And if not, is there specific metrics that the School Board is using that can be published or has been published that shows the criteria to get kids back at school?
Sure. So let me answer that real quick. So in last week's marathon meeting, we did get, receive the announcement from Dr. Waltz that we would be doing, so currently, right now, Special Education English learners, the most vulnerable we have, 1,200 are in since September 8th. Starting November 10th, pre-K students in kindergarten will go in, starting December 1, I think it's, or December 1, the first week of December, first grade goes in. January 10th, I think we have second and third grade going in, and that's what we've had announced so far. CTE students and students requiring lab work will be going in second quarter, starting November 10th, as they start working the CTE program out. That's not fully there. You are 100% correct, it's the uncertainty that is upsetting many folks. When you ask about the CDC metrics, and I'm going to ask, and I've had numerous conversations with Chair Wheeler on this, and looking forward to getting help from you all on some of this, but currently, the VDH has a dashboard for school metrics about going in, they have it color-coded. By CDC guidance, if you want to be, you know, to the letter, the primary indicator to determine whether you should go into school is whether you can mitigate the risk. So our ability to mitigate the risk, ensure six-feet distancing, masking, compliance with getting kids bust over, getting the buildings open, that's our primary indicator, regardless of what level you are, whether it's orange, red, or green, so moderate, mild, that is the primary indicator. So you see schools in Florida going in at much higher risk levels than we have, because they're insured that they believe they can get in risk-free or they can mitigate. And so are we going to publish anything, or is the School Board going to use anything? I mean, we're currently in criteria to go in, but it's really our belief, and I can have Dr. Waltz sort of answer more to that if he'd like, but how well we can mitigate and ensure the safety of our employees and our students. And I think that's where, you know, board members may be split on that. I think that's where our public is split on, and there's a lot of tension and anxiety, and there are folks who are saying that we're ready, we should go in, and there's folks saying we're not ready. And Dr. Waltz gave his recommendation next week. I know in our next board meeting, we have asked, and it's on the agenda for a calendar of the rest of the grades, so we're hoping to provide more certainty. And then I'll turn it over to Dr. Waltz for a quick, some answers to that. But the question, the thing that I, since you brought up Dr. Anshur, and Chair Wheeler and I have had these discussions, you know, our positivity rate, which she will tell you in her conversations and her presentations, is overblown, it's one of those numbers that is, you know, that is one of the indicators, but, you know, one of the issues on that is, and I don't want to use the word overblown, you know, the, you know, in Fairfax, for example, there's a lot more asymptomatic testing going on. What does that mean? That means when you go into the hospital, go for surgery, or I send a patient up there for surgery, they get tested, if they have symptoms or not. So they're getting a lot of testing done, so their positivity rate goes down because their denominator goes up, right? So they have a lot of negative tests. It's also much easier in Fairfax to get a test done. If you walk into a center anywhere in Fairfax, they don't ask you a whole lot of questions. If I say I want to test, they give me a test here, and I've gotten tested here twice, I have to go through a lot of rigamarole, I have to give all these, you know, do I have symptoms, do I not have symptoms? If I don't have a certain amount of symptoms, they'll give me a rapid test. If they don't have a certain amount of symptoms, they'll give me a PCR test. And so, and you all have done the best things, you've put our testing centers in the highest areas that are really, you know, where we're having some positive, you know, a lot of spread. But Fairfax has their testing all over the place, Loudon has their testing all over the place, and it's a lot easier to get tested. So their positivity rates are lower. I would argue, and this is again, I have these discussions with Dr. Anshur, and I've had them with Ann Wheeler, but if we expand our testing, you'll get a truer representation of what our positivity rate is, right? The more we test, the better numbers we have. And so when everyone says Prince William County is higher than everyone else, you know, part of it is, it's not as easy to get tests. Now, to be fair, Dr. Anshur will tell me, look, we're doing a lot of tests in Prince William, which we are, but we're doing a lot of tests in certain areas, and it's a challenge, and we're doing a lot of symptomatic testing, meaning you go in, they're targeting, they're like, okay, if I go in and say I have no symptoms today, and I want to get a test because I want to go travel to Massachusetts, Massachusetts requires a negative test? They're like, dude, we're not giving you a test. They'll tell me, I can't, we're not giving you a test for that. You know, we're not going to use our resources just because you want to travel to Massachusetts. Whereas in Fairfax, I can walk into a place and, you know, I don't have to even say anything, and I'll get a test.
So Chairman, I guess my, if I may, just jump in.
I'm asking you guys to help us do more testing.
Well, I'm asking a couple, I'm asking, let me be a little bit more direct here. Do you have a plan to bring kids back and teachers back safely with a hybrid plan, hybrid plan, I guess I used plan a bunch of times there, but to institute the hybrid plan for this upcoming quarter? And the reason I bring this up is, and I'll join my colleague here, Supervisor Bodie, I think it was back in, in June, maybe even May, that I said on the Board of County Supervisors, and I'm not a guy who likes to spend money, I get that, and some people don't like that about me, but I committed that I would be doing, to authorize whatever it took to get our kids back in school. And if it means turning our libraries over to the School District, if it means renting out the old Food Lion so we can put classes in there, if it, doing whatever it takes, you say you know the CDC, or we know the CDC guidelines, do we have a plan to bring, and you also talked about only about 50% of the kids, the parents want their kids to go back to school, so we're looking at about 50% of the student body, is there a plan to get those kids back to school safely? And when will this board, the School Board, make the decision on whether it's going to go to hybrid, or whether it's just going to finish out the year?
So right, so right. Yeah, so the hybrid's already been decided for pre-K, K first, second, and third, those dates have been announced, Dr. Waltz has announced those at the last meeting. We're asking for the dates for the rest of the grade levels and when we'd like to return on the hybrid model. So we'll have that answer for you Wednesday. Dr. Waltz, I can turn it over if you have any thoughts on this?
I can add a couple of things. First of all, we have, or at least I have been schooled more than once, that during these emergency meetings, that I need to be very careful about what direction the conversations take and what I contribute to them, and that we must stick to the agenda. So this item has to do with the budgetary needs for reopening the schools. That being said, Mr. Canlin, you mentioned several times, you know, do you have a plan? Is it posted someplace? Did I miss it? So I could, I could give you help with a few suggestions. One is, we have the calendar posted for the next quarter that shows those anticipated start dates, subject to the guidance, subject to changing health guidance. We also have our board meetings archived, so this was discussed deep into the weeds, deep into the morning of the following day last Wednesday. So all of that is archived and open to the public. It was over a six-hour meeting discussing all the, all the many thousands of details that have to do with this. I want to also mention that we look at the Virginia Department of Health guidance, and currently, their guidance is to begin bringing the pre-K to K based on current indicators. All of that, again, was shared with the board last Wednesday, and that is the plan over the next quarter. So again, there's a lot that, there's a lot of uncertainty, because there's a lot of uncertainty with the pandemic. And just today, all over the news, the coronavirus in the United States is seven-day moving average, one up 41%. We have approximately 49,200 people being diagnosed a day, and that's, you know, again, that's up, that's up 41% from last month. So these things are, these things are constantly monitored, we are constantly in contact with the Virginia Department of Health and Dr. Anshur, and reviewing that dashboard. All of those things have to be considered. So the other thing that I would say is, all of these things in every School Division is subject to change. So you may recall that the day before, well, Fairfax had already announced certain kids were going back, and like the day before, they changed on that. Loudon did the same thing on a certain day, that they were going to have people come in, when this was far less, far fewer diagnoses than now, way back in the spring, they were going to allow everybody come in and get their materials. Well, the numbers went up within a day, they had a beloved teacher who died of COVID, and they slammed the brakes the night before. So we have to be very careful about how we plan. What I am trying to do with my staff and with the feedback from the medical community is to bring back something that works and something that sticks, that we don't have to hopefully have constant reversals. As I mentioned, we have almost 90 people diagnosed, kids and staff members with what we're currently doing since the opening of school, which was only four weeks ago. So again, something else that would be a great resource, Mr. Canlin and anyone, I would encourage, we have a very robust, frequently asked questions and answers, there's lots of information on our website, and then we constantly update the community through our various community channels, parents especially in SCOOP. And so I'm going to show a possible, a possible way forward for the secondary students, but there are a lot of moving wheels, and everything is subject to change as it is all over the country.
Mr. Chairman?
Point of order, one sec. Mr. Canlin's question was regarding monies that we have allocated to help kids get back in, so we are on topic, so I want to make sure, because I have lawyers all over the place, and we are currently on topic. I will go to Ms. Franklin and then Ms. Lawson, because her light was on first.
Yeah, I did just want to clarify that the reason why in Prince William County, we don't, we're very selective with the type of tests that we do, is because we don't have as many resources that Fairfax has. They can do an unlimited amount of tests because they have many more resources. We rely almost strictly on the Health District and the state for our resources, so I just wanted to make that clear, that we're just not saying no to people, you know, we don't have access to as many tests. So I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware of that. We're not just saying no, we have to be selective, because we don't have access like some of our other jurisdictions do.
By the way, it's good medicine to be selective, you don't need to test everyone, but I'm just telling everyone that that's one of the reasons the positivity rate for us is a little bit higher, there is a barrier to get the test, it's a little bit, but it's a properly, medical, you know, there's a good reason for that barrier, but there is a, but in Fairfax, like I said, they'll give it out like candy. Ms. Lawson?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Thank you for pointing out that we are on subject, because I was going to take issue with Dr. Waltz. I appreciate you clarifying that. So I'm going to speak as a county supervisor, and I'm also going to speak as a parent of a senior at Patriot High School. Personally, I felt like you pulled the rug out from under many, many parents, families that are planning last Wednesday night, including my family. I'm kind of befuddled how you can, as a School Division, send me texts, send my husband texts, send us emails, call our landline with robocalls, reminding us to complete a form, whether our student was going to participate in the 50-50 hybrid or just continue learning virtually. And from what my husband told me, and correct, correct me if he was wrong, that the default, if we had not taken the time, or if he had not taken the time to complete the form, the default would be that Luke would, would return in the 50-50 hybrid, so not stay virtually, but quite the opposite, to participate in the 50-50.
Just on that real quick.
Is that correct?
So the default- So the default was for planning purposes. So if you didn't fill out the survey, we assumed you're coming back in, so we would plan to staff it. If you didn't, that didn't mean you were forced to come back in. You could stay virtual. It was just for a planning thing.
No, no, no. And I'm totally fine with that. Matter of fact, that's helping make my point.
Many people, yeah, many people don't fill out the survey.
Yeah. And that helps me make my point that that, if that's the default, which understandably you need to plan, but I found it really frustrating for so many families. Like you had to have some foresight ahead of next, last Wednesday, August or October 7th. So I just was really frustrated with the, and could relate as a parent to the many, many families that, and you know, I've made it very clear, there's a lot of families out there that are struggling logistically. And I know you all know this, especially single parents. And I just felt a need to publicly represent a lot of people that feel like the rug was pulled out from under us last, last week. And to Supervisor Canlin's point, Dr. Walts, we approved a budget with no plan in place for a return. And I'll give you a pass on that. That was, you know, a month or so after this pandemic hit. But we have since appropriated $25 million and tonight, another 15 million. Now, I'll be the first to admit, not county funds, we're just the channel for you. But right now, we still don't have a plan of any kind in place for middle and high school students. And a week ago tonight, a lot of folks thought that they were going to return their kids, middle and high school, 50-50. And I just, I have to express my frustration. I don't envy you and your team for those decisions that have, that need to be made, but somebody needs to make them and we've got to get back to some sense of normality. And I say that with acknowledging a sensitivity. My mom almost died of COVID this past weekend. So I, trust me, I understand the gravity of this virus. I felt it over the weekend with my 80-year-old mom. But we have many families throughout this county struggling and this is crippling them. And we've got to give them some type of timeline that they can see the light at the end of the tunnel. And that's what we're here to talk about tonight. So Supervisor Canlin, I think, was on message by asking you, what's your plan? Please don't send us to an FAQ or to, you know, to old board videos. We're leaders of this county and we need to have a collaborative discussion of how we can help you implement a return to school for all grade levels. So we're all ears, let's talk about it and dig in.
May I please? Hi.
Okay, Ms. Jessie.
You know, it's the same thing that I've seen over and over. Everybody's talking about everyone except the people who have to do the work, teachers. And, you know, in elementary, and they all live happily ever after. I've heard Dr. Walts and various people talk about how we are ahead of everybody and how we're doing this. There were teachers that did 10,000 IEPs. There are teachers who are now going to have to get used to cameras. And, you know, they're upset about it, but there are teachers who are afraid because, I said early, density and duration. Density, if only 60%, 40% of students returned to Cogan High School, you're still talking about 1,200 kids. Our high schools are very large. And Mr. Mulgrew knows that. I know little about high schools, but I know one thing, they love hugging each other, they love being with each other, and it's going to take a massive plan to make sure those kids are safe. High schoolers, kindergartners, teachers are being exposed to these kids all day long. And these kids are going to come back and hug their grandmothers and hug their parents. And so for me, I was a principal and I had to keep people safe. And I think there was a chat room, I'm told, that said Lily Jessis is agreeing with Dr. Walts, what's going to happen next, locusts? Well, because it made sense to me. I, I, I looked, I, my husband's in the military. In the military, he says it's not really a military expression, but you respond to what you see on the ground. So I had a meeting with my PTA at Rockledge last night and they said, are you guaranteeing that we're the first grad or kindergarten is going to return in November? And I said to them, that's the plan. We don't have control over this virus. We don't know if in November, something else is going to happen. To have a metrics that say, that you guarantee something when you can't control the virus. And one of the teachers said to us, we cannot do what you're asking us to do. When you're, I'm concerned about parents. I know what it's like trying to get a babysitter and everything and it's hard on all of us. But we have to keep our kids safe and we have to keep teachers safe. Because everybody's talking about technology and everybody's talking about parents, but no one's talking about the people in the field that are not sitting like I am in my home because I have some problems, health issues. And there are teachers who have parents, like your, Ms. Lawson, your mother, there are teachers who have parents, they, we received 400 emails from teachers. So they're afraid. So whatever we do, we need to do it cautiously, but we also need to know and be aware that we respond to what we see in the way of health. So what I saw from Dr. Anshur was that we were in the moderate range, moderate to high, I think. And so I, there's no way as a principal that I would agree to bring teachers back to be with 1,000 kids or 200 kids all day long. Because it's like they compare teachers to nurses. You can't make that comparison because the sanitation in a hospital is something you do all the time. The exposure to viruses is what they do for a living. We're in a different era. So I guess I'm asking you guys to give Dr. Walts and his staff some time to make decisions, but you make a decision, which my girls always say, I say this, but you make a decision, then you have to make the decision right. And that's where we are, people. We're going to make some decisions, but some of these decisions are going to have to be made right because it's not in the health and safety interest of kids. And I just, I'm just frustrated with all the concerns about getting kids back, getting kids back at any cost. Because when one of those parents' kids gets sick and they did not, what I used to tell my staff, take ordinary due care, you guys are going to be calling us. So I'm just asking you to be patient with us. These teachers have done more than we've ever asked them to do. And I'm assuming that Dr. Walts and his staff will come back with a plan for high school and middle school kids who are older and can carry the virus and can pass it on to other people. And you're just dealing with a huge, he's right, we are a huge school system. And kindergartners love to hug people, but so do high schoolers. So I feel like I'm preaching to you, but we've got to keep our kids safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. I'm going to go to Ms. Williams and then if Dr. Walts wants to weigh in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to say, you know, we're on the 21st day of school and spending doesn't cure a virus and we have to do our due diligence. There's never been an indication by this board or anybody on this board that we don't want to return students to a building. We want to make sure that it's a priority that we do it safely. And I think that there's sort of this narrative going on that we promised on November 10th, that we did not promise on November 10th, we said we were planning for. And we put a very specific language in our resolution and our vote that night that said, if feasible. Because we understand that the virus and its outlying effects is not anything that any school division, any public body, any government institution can control. And we made that very clear. I understand logistics as a single parent and as someone who has struggled to pay daycare and knows how far in advance that you have to schedule and arrange daycare in order to survive. So I also represent a district that is full of Title I schools, full of people who make under the amount of money that they need to survive regularly. The majority of my district, just like the majority of the school division, has chosen to stay virtual because it's safe. But even as I advocate continuously for virtual, I also note that our ultimate goal is to return students to the building to continue their learning. And with that, I want to sort of also clear up this narrative that it's sort of returning to normalcy because it's not. We're spending this money and we're having this conversation because we want to make sure that our buildings are safe. Our students aren't going to be able to wander around. They're not going to be able to participate in clubs like they normally did. They're not going to be able to socialize like they normally did. We're making sure that we have appropriate distancing and some of our buildings are so old that six feet of distancing is a tremendous feat to ensure safety and we have to do that to comply. Some places, there will only be three feet of distancing because our buildings just simply cannot handle that. That's an important thing to remember. So it's very easy to pound on a school division and say, you know, we have to get our kids in the building, but we must be sure that we're providing safe and proper care and we're taking our time to do that. Our kids are learning, period. They're learning. That's what virtual learning is. They're not learning in a building. Are all students doing well successfully virtually? No, because there's not one-size-fit-all education, pandemic or not. What we are going to do is what we have done is continue to do the best to serve our student body. And we're going to bring them back in a building, but I just want to make sure that it's clear, we're talking about spending monies that when they come in, that they're going to be, it's going to look different. It's not going to be the same. And that's a very important narrative that I think we forget to address when we talk about spending money, because that's the other side of it. So I want to make sure families are aware when they're bringing their students back in the building, that the choice that their students are going to see, like Mr. Bodie said earlier, Supervisor Bodie, it's going to be different. It's not going to be the same. And we're making sure that we have supports in place, mental health supports placed to deal with that, so the students continue to adjust during this pandemic. But I want to, I just want to, can't say enough, there's a certain things that no matter, no matter how much we spend, we have no control over. And I also want to make it clear that we do have students right now in school buildings because we often talk about returning to learn as if that's not happening for some of our students. And I don't want to negate their educational experience. I don't want to negate the teachers who are in buildings right now. And as we ramp up to continue to have more students being serviced in buildings, I think it's important that we acknowledge what we are doing and what we are continuing to do. We did not present a plan for middle and high school, which I think is the ultimate question here, but that's forthcoming. We also had a three-week break in between, which I think a lot, was very trying for a lot of our school families because they were used to us meeting so frequently. We're going to go back to our regular, every other first and third Wednesdays. But I would encourage parents and everyone else who has questions to continue to look at our website and update because we are providing more facts and information, I think, than any surrounding school division. And that's a credit to our staff and the hours and work that they are putting in to make sure that people are informed and the information is available.
Dr. Latif.
Let me just, if Dr. Walts wants to sort of respond, if he has anything to add over what Ms. Jessie and Ms. Williams added. Dr. Walts?
Yes, just very briefly, I would say that please understand that I can empathize with parents. I'm the parent of a senior in high school as well. And I certainly understand all that's involved with that. First and foremost, my considerations depend upon the health experts, the ones locally in particular, and the CDC. The guidance that they gave on suggesting to bring in pre-K to three only and to phase that, and we're phasing that in, has to do with, at least from, from what they're telling us, that the, those students at that age are less susceptible to carrying the virus or, you know, I don't want to start talking in medical terms, but the bottom line is on September 28th, that guidance was issued by Virginia Department of Health. The plan that I presented was based on that guidance on October 7th. And we will have a plan, but it will be tentative at best. The final thing I would say, having to do with the survey and some of the other things that you said, is that the board in July made a decision to go with the 50-50, but not only did they put in the resolution, the board members to the person said, please give us your feedback as things change. Please let us know what you're recommending. We're not married to this plan. I talked to every single board member before that board meeting by phone and each and every one of them talked the same way. We need your recommendation. We, we're not married to what that vote was and we gave you the autonomy to give us different recommendations based upon the metrics and other issues involved. Thank you.
Ms. Lawson.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. So just to make sure that I'm not misunderstood, what was frustrating for many families is the buildup of the 50-50 plan for all grade levels. So when the school division is, you know, constantly pinging you through the different ways that I mentioned earlier, you know, and then suddenly it completely changes and turns upside down, that's, that's a big reason why there's a lot of frustration. One thing I think that I like to live by and maybe this is something that, that you were trying to do and it just totally missed me, was manage expectations. If there, if there was a strong message behind all of these communications to parents about the 50-50 rolling out in the second quarter and complete this form and phone calls, texts, all the, I mean, you have a great communications department. They certainly know how to get ahold of us parents. So kudos to them. But, but it was the buildup that, that I really think most people were expecting this to really happen. And I realize that it's hard to control messaging sometimes. You know, I'm guessing that most folks don't read the fine print of resolutions. They read headlines, they read social media. But that's what I'm trying to communicate was, is try to manage expectations. I think had the buildup been maybe, you know, scaled back and it wasn't for all grade levels, then there probably wouldn't have been a big letdown. And as far as the teachers go, I personally know a lot of teachers that are ready to get back into in-person teaching. I don't know if it's something that you're looking at making optional for teachers, especially those who have health concerns that want to, you know, for their own health reasons, teach virtually. But for every teacher that does not want to come back to in-person, I can find a teacher that is willing to and ready to. So there's a lot of teachers that the PWEA leadership does not speak for.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lawson, and all fair points. So we'll stick to, if there's any further questions regarding the funding moving forward, just to stay on topic, so I stay on agenda, so I don't get arrested. But, but all, all fair points. And Ms. Lawson, just to sort of echo, I have four children in the school division and the resolution did point out, our goal was to get students into the 50-50 model starting second quarter. And if you look at the sort of grammar and, and I don't want to be a jerk about it, but it does sort of leave some leeway for us to, to work within the context of that. And with the last part of the resolution said, ultimately it's up to the superintendent to also determine whether it's safe, feasible, and he can make it flexible and adaptive. I understand we let people down and that has absolutely been made clear to every single board member by the hundreds of emails. And so you echo a lot of that. So we appreciate that point of view and do recognize where we are on that, no doubt about it. And we are working diligently to get kids back in the building. But, but as you point out, there are a lot of various point of views on this. And amongst our board, we share different points of view on this. And so it is very challenging. And that's why last week's meeting went over eight hours. So next week's meeting may very well do the same. We don't know. But we're looking forward to having a calendar and having more information out to everyone. And as Dr. Walts points out, and I think we'll always say this, that everything is subject to change. But, and that's it. I think, I didn't see any more hands on, Ms. Vega?
[inaudible]
Oh, I thought you had your hand up. My apologies. Okay. I think we're good on that. We can move towards the next agenda item, which would be scheduling of future joint meetings. So again, we're going to, I think this is the cultural competence here, implicit bias training. training. I know Ms. Williams and Ms. Franklin are interested in talking about these things. And again, this meeting would have had a further discussion and more robust on that. This is more sort of, I guess, Ms. Williams, would you say that we'd like everyone to put in their viewpoints for our next point, our agenda for the next joint meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we just basically want to make sure that we can try to put that on a future joint meeting schedule, possibly the meeting, I think, is December 8th. Or if not able to do that, I would like to suggest that, you know, a future meeting, a separate meeting. The idea at the beginning was to have a separate meeting, but if not, a December 8th will work. You're absolutely right, Chairman. Due to our restrictions on conversation, we can't go into further conversations outside of actually scheduling this to happen.
Mr. Martino, do we have it for December 8th as our next joint meeting?
Yes, ma'am. We do have it scheduled on the board's calendar for December 8th.
In the evening.
That's a board-to-board meeting.
Yes. And we would love for the schools that hold us in this.
Yes.
Like this. Get used to this.
We, yeah. We will do that. And then, and I can't thank you all for coming over here and being here. I want to, before I turn this over to Madam Chair, to adjourn and then do your vote on, on our request, I want to thank our media team, Jim Leb, Mike Davis, and Sam Altman, our IT team, Lucky Devilla, Devilla, and Jason Stevens, Henry Dominici, and John Jenkins for the work they did for you all this afternoon and putting together a great meeting, and thanking them for helping us get this up. This was not live this evening. This was, will be recorded and put up on the website later. And I just wanted to thank them. And, and thank you all for coming here. And listen, if all of you have concerns, certainly give us a call. Make your points, you know, please let us know what you're thinking, what you're hearing in the community. It is important to us, and these are certainly challenging times. Ms. Franklin?
Yeah, just very briefly, I just want to thank everyone for agreeing to do the joint meeting. This is my first joint meeting, and I know Ms. Williams was pushing very hard to have these, you know, before COVID got started and we got delayed. I didn't say a lot tonight, and most of that is because of the relationship we have. And, you know, I'm pretty clear on what the goals of the school system are, what, what the funding is needed for, what's going on in my schools on the Route 1 corridor. So, so I do appreciate that. But, you know, I think that this is important. I'm glad to know that we have future meetings coming up, and hopefully everyone has a better sense of what the other board is, is up to. So I really appreciate the opportunity of, of having this type of meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
I'll go to Mr. Canlin, then Ms. Bailey.
Yeah, thank you. I, I guess I thought we'd have a little bit more discussion. Are these cultural competency and implicit bias training, are these the proposed topics for the next joint board meeting? Is that why they're on the agenda? And if so, can we have a little discussion about what that, who's proposing that and what that, that means? Is that, is that implicit bias training for the board members? Is that implicit bias training that we're going to be discussing? I, I'm just, I guess I'm just kind of confused on what that actually means.
Yeah, so what, so what, yeah, yeah, yeah. Why don't we do that, so these are topics that we can bring up in any fashion for our next board meeting. And what I would ask is that they're thrown out there for a robust discussion offline, and as we plan the next meeting agenda, hopefully we have a quorum. There are, you know, I think this came up really with the Joint Task Force that Ms. Franklin had recommended, and there's other concerns of other things. But we can't really talk about it technically.
Well, I, I think we can talk about something that's listed on the agenda, can't we?
No, they can't.
Yeah, the problem is, that agenda was put together before I knew I wouldn't have quorum.
Oh, you, okay.
Yeah, the problem is I had, I, I.
For my one-eighth of the Board of County Supervisors, I would definitely like to understand a lot more what that means.
So let's, let's have that conversation in a, in a scenario where we can do that.
Comes to.
Mr. Canlin, I'd be happy, as the one who initially pushed for that, to provide you with any insights or further details offline. Legally, we cannot have this discussion, but I am more than willing to spend as much time as you'd like to talk about this, as it's been pushed since the day of, before all of us were sworn in for this term.
Legally, I'm, I'm willing to put myself out there, that I've got some concerns about what's, something listed on our agenda without any additional information to it. And from what this seems like, we're implicitly saying by not objecting to this, that this is going to be discussed at the board meeting. Now, you're saying this is just on here for possible consideration for the next joint meeting. That's fine. But I, in no way want to make my comments seem like I endorse having some sort of training for both meetings on, or both boards on implicit bias unless I actually know what that means.
Understood.
Okay.
Ms. Bailey.
Thank you very much. I want to give, let me take my mask off too, Vic. I want to give you, first of all, like Supervisor Franklin, I just want to thank you and the board and the staff that's on the screen and the, and the board members that are on the screen for taking a dive into this opportunity. I know we've been talking about it for a long time, and I think it was a very lucrative meeting in terms of process, thought, detail, information. We, I know initially when we were asking for information, we were getting in your knickers a little bit, and we're sorry, but I think it was fruitful. So thank you very much for that. I wanted to give you some positive feedback. I'm on the Northern Virginia Regional Commission, and you constantly get kudos for the process and the work that you're doing here in Prince William County with our students, especially with special ed, the process you've, you've done there, and for the food provisions and insecurities within our county. So I just want to give you an encouragement in terms of that and to thank you for certainly providing a roadmap, a guide, not just the board, but also from Superintendent Waltz for your information in terms of the monies and how we're spending it. Because we do have parameters and, and cutoffs by the end of the year, and I think you've done an exceptional job in providing that information. So that's, with all that said and done, I appreciate your work and my best to my representative in his absence tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Vega.
Thank you. I did have one last question. We were moving very quickly with the slides at the beginning of the meeting, and I don't want to leave this meeting without getting clarification. I saw that the governor just sent another $16 million in CARES Act funding to the schools. Did the schools receive a previous disbursement of money directly from the state through CARES Act funding?
Yeah, so on the slides, it was nine million last year in fiscal year 20, or 1920, I guess that's fiscal 20. But yeah, we received that and we listed on there. The part of that money, as Mr. Canlin pointed out, and her ass was on salary, pay for extra stuff.
Thank you.
Okay. And I think at this point, our meeting will be adjourned.
No, no, actually, we don't have to adjourn.
We don't have to do.
Yeah, that was a miscommunication.
Got it. I'm sorry, Mike.
No, no, no.
Madam Chair, take over, please.
Okay, so we actually have a motion, so we're waiving the rules of procedure and amending the agenda from earlier, dated October 13th, to add the item to the joint meeting with the Prince William County School Board to budget and appropriate $15,906,398 to the Prince William County Schools Operating Fund from Corona, Coronavirus Aid Recovery and Economic Security Act funding allocated by the Commonwealth of Virginia for COVID-19 preparedness and response. Before we go, Supervisor Angry is going to say something before we vote on this motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, before the board's discussion, consideration, and approval of the budget appropriation and transfer of $15,906,398 of coronavirus relief funds from the Federal CARES Act Special Revenue Fund to the Prince William County Public School Division, I need to declare a personal interest in this transaction. My wife is a special education instructional aide with the county schools. As a school's employee, my wife and I are a member of a group, the members of which are affected by this transaction. Because I am able to participate in this transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest, I will be participating. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Angry. We have a motion. Was someone willing to make that motion?
Second.
Made by Supervisor Bailey, seconded by Supervisor Bodie. Ms., is there any further discussion on this?
Madam Chair, just very quickly.
Supervisor Bodie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to echo my colleagues in thanking the school division and the school board for hosting us, giving us a very in-depth and meaty but concise presentation on what you've been spending the money on, your future needs, because it's also going to help us plan the future. I just wanted to conclude by saying, we're proud to support giving you additional funds in this method because obviously we're not having to appropriate anything of our new CARES Fund money. But in many ways, I see our teachers, our educators, our administrative staff that be in buildings every day as frontline workers, especially as we transition more and more into having more students and more folks at risk every single day. So I want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can in our power to help empower you to plan out and make sure these, these school buildings and these environments for learning are as safe as possible. Because I've said this ad nauseam in our chambers, and I'll say it here, we cannot act like what you all do is siloed out from us. You all interact with, you are the single biggest employer in the entire county. That means more employees are at risk in your, under your care than any other employer. That means that we have a vested moral interest in making sure you all can do whatever you can to protect your employees because it's protecting our employees and it's a public safety issue for our entire county and the surrounding counties. We are the second largest school division in the Commonwealth. We are the 35th largest in the country. There are hundreds of thousands of people potentially at risk if we don't do this right. So I just wanted to echo that and say that we need to continue to empower you all to do whatever you need to do to protect our teachers, our administrators. And it's not about just funding our future now, it's about protecting it. So I just wanted to say that before you vote. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor, any further discussion? With that, Ms. Madden, can you call the roll, please?
Supervisor Bailey?
Aye.
Supervisor Bodie?
Aye.
Supervisor Angry?
Aye.
Supervisor Canlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Franklin?
Aye.
Supervisor Lawson?
Aye.
Supervisor Vega?
Aye.
Chair Wheeler?
Aye.
Vote unanimous?
That was an easy way to give you $60 million.
Carol, why can't I do it like that?
Yeah, we just have her do all the stuff. It's easier.
Why can't I do it like that? Can we find some law that lets us do that?
So I, I want to end with, before we adjourn, and I don't know how we adjourn a joint meeting, we'll have to figure that out. You know, thank you, you know, it's, it's great to have a good working relationship with our school board, you know, it really is. And, you know, I know a lot of the districts work really closely together, and that is, that makes the big difference, you know, that communication, you know, I know we talk a lot on the phone. And so, you know, I think it's, I think it's been great. It's been nine months, and thank goodness that we're coming together to work together because this is a time we really need to do it. Because it's been a difficult nine months, you know, especially for the school system. And I think everybody can, can understand that. So with that, I think we're done. Motion, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Madden, they'll have to do. Is that okay?
Madam Chair, I would recommend that the clerk take the role to make sure.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Madden, can you take the role for the Board of County Supervisors?
Supervisor Lawson?
Aye.
Supervisor Bailey?
Aye.
Supervisor Angry?
Aye.
Supervisor Bodie?
Aye.
Supervisor Canlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Franklin?
Aye.